All right, um, good, I was just gonna say good morning, wow. Good evening, um, welcome to the August 14th Planning Commission meeting. And first we've got the call to order.
Commissioner Douglas.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Nemirov.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
Present.
Commissioner Berube.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here, thank you. Um, next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Were there any edits to the agenda? No, is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the meeting minutes from July 24th. Again, any edits to that?
I'll move approval of the meeting minutes as submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have, um, three public hearings tonight. And, wait, again, which comes first, community comment or public hearings? Cause it's showing on the agenda, this flip, way to walk backwards. We have to get it out of sync. Okay, so next is community comment, this is an opportunity from anyone from the community to, you get three minutes to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here who'd like to bring up a topic that's not on the agenda? So, moving on from that, now, we've got, thanks Chris, we have three public hearings. The first one is a variance request for 5209 Grove Street.
Chair members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is located at 5209 Grove Street. It consists of a Rambler with an attached two-car garage, it's located south of Grove. What you'll notice that is along the west side of the property, there's a 30-foot wide unimproved right-of-way between, excuse me, the subject home and then the property to the west. The property owner is hoping to add on to the garage as well as to the back of the home. Um, the addition to the back will be for a master bedroom, bath and dining area. The addition to the garage stall will add an additional third garage stall closer to the west lot line that requires the variance. This is a little closer view of the subject property. It's a very large lot. This is a, an updated survey, the area highlighted in orange is the garage addition that's going to the west and that's what's requiring a variance. The variance is an 8.6-foot variance to the side yard, it's actually considered a side street variance because this is right-of-way and there is a deeper setback required from the right-of-way. Typically, you would be required to have a 10-foot setback, however, because this is considered right-of-way, there's a 15-foot setback that's required from the garage addition. And then the area highlighted in blue is the addition that does not require any variances. This is the existing home, existing conditions, and then the proposal, they'll be adding a new overhang front entry and then the additional garage stall and then you'll see in the roof view, the proposed addition to the rear, some other angles and views. The floor plan, again, the area to the rear is conforming the area that would be added on to the garage. The garage that exists there today is quite down, small for, it's a downsized two-car garage. It's not as wide as a typical two-car garage and there's no direct access into the house. So what they would like to do is add on to the garage so that they can have direct access into the house, which adds stairs, so in order for them to go into the house, they would be actually reducing the size of the existing garage, it's a, it's a very small two-car garage. And then here's some cutout views of the improvements. And this is in context with the homes on either side. The home that's most affected, as you can see, there's quite a bit of distance, there's going to remain a 70-foot distance between the two properties, given that there is this right-of-way between the two properties. The home that's directly to the west that's affected by the improvement also has a three-car garage, there's a number of homes within the area that have three-car garages. The primary issue, does it relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use for complying with the ordinance's requirements? The practical difficulty is that the 15-foot west side yard setback requirement from the right-of-way is a requirement, however, given the spacing, um, there's a generous spacing between the two properties, there's a footy, 30-foot right-of-way and in addition to the spacing between the two garages and the right-of-way, you have at least approximately 70 feet between the improvement and the neighboring property's home. So, um, the project meets the spirit and intent, and intent of the ordinance with the generous spacing between the improvements and the neighboring property. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property? The existing garage is undersized and has no door, direct access into the home. Putting a door from the garage into the house requires two steps, also reducing the size of the garage. The addition will be a seamless expansion to the home, the homeowner is trying to correct this design flaw that was original to the house. Will a variance alter the essential character of the home or the neighborhood? Their intent was to maintain the Rambler and the very look of the front of the house is consistent with what exists there now, really the only change is that they're going to be putting the, the front entry overhang with columns, improving the front of the house as well as adding on the third garage stall. Staff does recommend approval of the side yard setback variance to the west lot line, would recommend approval of the variance as requested, subject to the findings listed in the report, including a survey date stamped July 8th, 2019. The elevations and building plans date stamped July 8th, 2019, and compliance with the conditions and comments of the environmental engineers memo. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions, Jimmy?
Thanks, Chris, great presentation. My two questions are surrounding the unimproved right-of-way. It's interesting because it kind of dead-ends as you go south on the block, what was the intent with it before and it seems like it's out of the question now since people own property?
Well, and it's too narrow to actually improve it as any sort of street, you'd have to have at least 50 or 60 feet of right-of-way in order to, um, improve it as a street. I, I'm only assuming at some point in time there had been, some of the lots that are to the south were quite deep, perhaps to connect to potential lot divisions in the future, I, I don't really know. There aren't any utilities, um, within that right-of-way, so.
That was my other question, and then, is there a third? That is the city of the Dynas' right-of-way, correct?
Yes.
So who maintains that property or do just the neighbors share it?
I'm assuming, and I don't know for sure, but I believe that the homeowners on either side probably do some maintenance.
Just thinking maybe if, you know, if there were drainage issues, maybe the city could implement something in between there to mitigate it and, you know, make easier maintenance for people, since it isn't their property technically to take care of.
And I, I don't know for sure if the city is maintaining it or if the property owners adjacent to are.
Yes, Chris, that, that right-of-way then, on the west side, um, so, so the city maintains that right-of-way, right? I mean.
Well, we, the city has it, we have control over it, yes.
But I mean, if it was ever vacated, half of it would go to that property.
Correct.
Anyway, right, I mean, so.
And there would be no variance required.
I know, would you say the right-of-way is 30 feet?
It is, it's 30 feet wide.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a potential 15 feet that the property would acquire along there anyway. And the overall elevation of the, the bill, I mean, doesn't change, right?
No.
Yeah, so, seems pretty minimal, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Sue.
I just wanted to clarify, is it, um, the drawings are north, when we talk about north, the north elevation is actually the, the front of the house, is that correct?
Yes, that would be this lower elevation right here.
Okay, and south is the rear.
Correct.
East, west, let me see, west is the one that's where the garage is.
Correct.
Can you, can you flip to those elevations? Oh, I'm sorry, you just did.
Yep.
Okay, so the garage, that's the garage that says. Proposed north, that should be west, is that correct?
I believe so, they may be mismarked.
Okay, all right, so they've got them turned around a little bit here. And then, um, uh, just want to clarify, when we talk about, uh, how do we say this? Practical difficulties, circumstances that are not, that are unique to the property and not self-created. When someone purchases a house and the situation is already there, true, they didn't create it, but they were aware of it. So, does that really merit the definition not self-created?
I believe anybody that purchases a property would look at it and understand the conditions.
And understand it, right.
Yeah, um, in this particular instance, the family is growing and they are looking to add on additional space, it's a very large lot, they have a lot of potential, they're not considering going up or removing the house or rebuilding, they're trying to accomplish what they can within the parameters of what's there right now. If they remove the house, they certainly would have the opportunity to comply and also address all of their needs. They may have a better answer for you in terms of what their needs are currently, um, it wasn't the case when they purchased the house. Their desire, when I've had conversations with the architect is that, or the designer, is that they're, they really want to maintain the Rambler, I mean, that was important to them, and they want to add on to the house and not start from scratch.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I think they're very, they have good reasons for that, I just wanted to be sure that when we, cause you, cause we typically have to review these questions and I just want to really understand self-created. In my mind, self-created is something that they did in the past that put them in this situation. When it's a house, a floor plan of a house that was purchased by a homeowner, they didn't do it, cause it was the previous owner, but they purchased the house realizing that is a limitation. I, I just question whether that becomes a real justification for saying that this, they're, they're facing something that wasn't self-created. The desire to expand is something now that they're adding to the plate and so, yes, it becomes an obstacle, but truly, whether or not it meets the definition of self-created, that's the part that I'm just questioning a bit. But I appreciate your explanation, cause I, I agree that, I think that the reasons that they've demonstrated all make sense and are very reasonable.
Great, thank you, Chris. Is the applicant here? You, you don't have to speak, but if you want, that'd be great, you can come up and introduce yourself and maybe answer some of those.
I can use a phone?
And I would just use like either podium, yeah, and just state your name and address and.
Hi, my name is Kari Quatley, I'm the owner of 5209 Grove Street. To answer the questions about the right-of-way, we do maintain it, it's not maintained by the city, so we are taking that on as, as a responsibility of owning the property. And I think, Chris, thank you very much, um, you did a good job of explaining exactly the reasons why we're, we're asking for this variance and why we want to improve the house as it is.
So are you, are you building a third garage stall because you're gonna have an additional car or?
Well, we have two cars and the second car doesn't fit in the garage. And when, as was explained, the, um, over the past seven years since I've owned the house, I bought it as a single person, I got married, I had two kids, and we have a dog. So, the amount of stuff that we have has just gotten bigger, we have bikes and strollers and everything, and so we'd like to be able to park the car in the garage and be able to get the kids' stuff in the garage as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
So this is also a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak about this No?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So bringing it back to the Planning Commission, are there any other comments, motions? Go ahead, Ian.
My only comment is just I thought the staff did a good job laying out the issues and the, and their reasoning for this one, so, um, I thought, I thought after reading the staff presentation, I'm right in line with the proposal made by staff. So, I'm comfortable making a motion to approve it as laid out in the staff memo, subject to the conditions, but I don't want to forestall, or, or, or foreclose, excuse me, any other discussion up here. But I will make that motion.
I think I, I could support this, I, I do think it, it's fortunate that it happens to be a lot that does have this, what do we call, unimproved right-of-way. It does appear that at one point the city had intended to put, or wanted the option to put the street through there. I, I do have a little bit of a problem with the rendering of the house next to the adjacent houses and I don't know what the answer is. I think that some submittals do an excellent job of that, but I don't think the cut and paste works. The reason I bring it up is because I've received several comments from residents who said, "Come out here and see this house, it looks nothing like what they said it was going to look like in terms of scale." This is a perfect example of the cut and paste is not in scale with the house next to, I mean, clearly you can see it's much smaller. So I just want to point it out, maybe for our future, just to be aware that maybe on the staff side, city side, we can come up with a requirement that says, do it digit, do not do it digitally, actually compose it from a draw, a DWG, a drawing file. Cut and paste is never correct because you can never get a perspective from an elevation level. So, just wanted to point that out.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. All right. So, next on the agenda is, okay, is the preliminary plat of an existing outlot on Oak Lane.
Thank you, Chair members of the commission. So this property is located west of the Grandview District, south of Vernon, south of Garden Park. This is an extremely unique application, probably one like, well, we haven't seen probably in the last, at least 10 years. It is an existing outlot, so you can see the lot highlighted today as it exists. So back when this area was being planned for in the 60s and 70s, the thinking at that time was that there would be a roadway connection between Oak Lane and Garden Avenue. So you can see this area right here was platted for a future roadway that would connect Oak Lane with Garden, and the idea being that there would be lots built on both sides of the street, probably two in this location, two to the east, and then these lots to the south, you can see they're very deep, they're 300 feet deep. The thinking at that time, when these, when this property was ready to be developed, that an additional 25 feet of right-of-way would be dedicated, and then the resulting lots, you would have 135-foot deep lots, you'd have two of them, the ones that would exist off of Benton and then the row of new lots. So that was the thinking at least back in the 60s, maybe even prior to that, was to provide that connection. So here you can see part of that right-of-way was platted by the current property owner. So if we go back to 1975, this was the plat that, so this is the lot that we're looking at. So this was the plat that created three homes to the north, Oak Lane was platted and there was two lots on the west side of Oak Lane, and they platted a 25-foot right-of-way along the south, again, thinking an additional 25 feet would be taken sometime in the future. Forward to 1985, that southern lot was replatted, so once this property was ready to be built on, the cul-de-sac was added, and this lot was platted as a buildable lot and there's a house on there today. The lot that we're looking at this evening was platted as an outlot, so it's this lot right here, again, the right-of-way was already dedicated as part of that 1975 plat. No park dedication was paid for the creation of that lot, the idea was it would be, it could be buildable if it were replatted in the future. So there's a lot of circumstances out there that led to that roadway never being constructed and this, this graphic is one of the biggest reasons, there's a big wetland out there. So you can see the blue shape, there's also, this is a 100-year floodplain, not a FEMA floodplain, but a, one of those city floodplain shapes. So that right-of-way you see was platted right through the middle of that wetland, some of these lots to the south are encumbered by that wetland, the lot to the east has a large portion of the wetland, and again, here's the lot that we're looking at this evening. So what the applicant is proposing, so as, with the current status as an outlot, it's unbuildable. To make the, the property buildable, they have to plat it, so that's the request, it's a preliminary plat to make that existing outlot a buildable lot. So what the applicant would like to do is construct a private driveway off the end of the cul-de-sac, highlighted in yellow here, again, over that existing right-of-way to serve a new lot. The blue line here is the edge of the wetland, as required by the many, by the watershed district, they're proposing a buffer, they've been through a preliminary review to help protect that wetland and they're also suggesting a rain garden. So the drainage on this site generally flows to the south toward that wetland, that same drainage pattern would continue, and again, with that rain garden potentially filter out sediment before it moves on to the wetland. So the applicant has done, provided, so the minimum lot size requirements are based on the median of all prop, of all median lot area width and depth of property within 500 feet. So they've run that calculation and the, the existing lot, the one proposed to be built on, meets the minimum lot area and lot width, where it falls short is in regard to lot depth. The median came out at 151 feet and this, this lot is 138. As I mentioned, when this area was originally platted, 135 feet was the, was the minimum lot depth requirement. We've since added this, this median that establishes the minimum lot size. So the request is a preliminary plat, again, to make this existing lot, turn it into a buildable property, and that lot depth variance from 151 to 138. So primary issue, is the proposed replat, or plating that outlot into a buildable lot, and the lot depth variance reasonable for the site? So in this case, staff believes that this request is reasonable. The lot was platted with the assumption that it would be built on at some point in the future, again, with that right-of-way, that, that didn't happen. The, that right-of-way was platted by the existing property owner, it's, it's in an estate now, but it's the Austin family that did do the, the previous subdivision, so they, they did dedicate all of that right-of-way as part of the, the earlier plat that we looked at. In terms of the wetland protection and grading drainage, engineering staff has reviewed the plans, they find them acceptable, there wouldn't be any negative impacts on adjacent property, again, drainage runs generally to the south toward the wetland. There is a floodplain shape that the driveway would come through, so to compensate for that floodplain that's filled, they would have to add storage within this flood shape. Again, engineering is comfortable with reviewing a specific house plan that that, that they can provide that extra compensation for that flood shape. We believe that it's reasonable to provide that private driveway over the existing right-of-way that that's been dedicated. In terms of the lot depth, again, we find that reasonable, again, given it was platted at the time, where 135 feet was the, was the standard. The lot depths in this area, particularly around Grove Street, range in the 120 feet to 138 feet, so the depth isn't inconsistent with this neighborhood. We don't believe that this public road, this would ever be constructed again, given the, given the wetland that's located there. But we do believe it would be reasonable to serve this site as it has been, planned for development really, from the start. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the plat and the variance, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined. And I just want to quickly highlight a couple of the conditions. First, a park dedication would be required as this wasn't ever dead, the park dedication was never paid for this specific lot and that's reflected in the minutes that, that were attached, you know, the, the minutes from 1975 and 1985. At the time of final plat, they would have to enter into an encumbrance agreement with the city that would allow them to put that private driveway within the right-of-way. We're also requiring that, should the proper, should the proposal be approved, that the existing home would have to be installed with a fire sprinkler system. Again, that's due to the length of that driveway and getting a, a fire truck up there, so there's concern there, but if the home is constructed with a fire sprinkling system, the fire department doesn't have any issues. Lastly, note that the driveway is proposed kind of on the north end within the right-of-way. We're suggesting that this driveway in this east-west area be centered within the right-of-way and to provide greater, a greater buffer to this existing home here to the north. The applicant has indicated they have a landscape plan here, it provides them room to plant trees within the right-of-way and not on the adjacent property owner's property. So again, just to provide a little extra buffer from that home. So with that, again, staff is recommending approval, subject to those findings and conditions, and I can stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Carrie, I'm gonna, go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Dr. The, the wetland, does it, that hasn't, does that have an outlet? I mean, is it, is there a?
Uh, I don't believe so. Is there a catch basin? Okay.
So, okay, that's what I thought, so, I mean, there, there is some, okay. And I think you did cover it, the driveway is in what was, was already platted or that, that portion, portion of what a potential road would have been, so it's, there's no additional, that is the area that was original, originally platted.
Correct, yep, this is the fifth, there's a 50-foot wide right-of-way that goes to the south.
And what hadn't been obtained would have been south of that if they ever were gonna construct the roadway?
Correct, the east-west portion is 25 feet wide, so the idea was an additional 25 feet would be taken with the development of the property to the south, and that's what never occurred.
And then the utilities for the new lot would come in along the driveway? And then the utilities for the new lot would come in along the driveway routing?
Correct.
Okay. So water sewer wouldn't cross that property to the west, I mean, it would be within that driveway?
Correct.
Okay. And then just maybe a last question. So the outlet, that was interesting, because I always thought outlets were sort of designated just for, like, that kind of infrastructure use, you know, like storm ponding. But here, I think it was clearly stated, it was just a means of identifying land that hadn't been planted. They didn't know what to do with it, so they just called it an outlet. That's kind of an unusual, I mean, that's not usually what I think of the use of the term outlet, but, you know, it was just...
Oh, the outlot?
Outlot, I mean, outlot. Yeah, it was just sort of, we don't know what we're going to do with it.
Yeah, it's hold it in basically an unbuildable status until it's ready to be platted.
Rather than being assigned this ponding response, you know, use. It just, they didn't know what, how to finish the plat, so.
Right. You know, and when the area was platted, the rules and regulations for filling of wetlands, very different than it is today. So the thought probably at that time was that that wetland would be filled and the road constructed.
All right. Thank you.
Just a question. Back in 1980, when the home to the west of this property was platted, it appears it was built very close to the property line. Did that get a variance, and why was it applied at that diagonal? And is that to match a cul-de-sac? Is there history behind that? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know. Part of the thinking could have been, you know, with this right-of-way here, this could be construed as a side yard setback with a 10-foot setback requirement, given the right-of-way down here. So it's really, well, it's a corner lot, you could say. So this could be the side street setback. I didn't find any record of a variance.
So who currently owns this lot? It is owned by a resident?
It's owned in the, you saw the Austin name on the plat. It's held in an estate of the Austin family.
So there is a private owner to it?
Correct.
Okay. And the applicant is not the owner, is that correct?
I would assume that they have some kind of a purchase agreement.
Okay. So they're trying to figure out whether this is buildable.
Right.
Okay. And I'm surprised that the city engineering did not flag this. Now, this serves as the collection basin for that entire area, right? Because that's what that red thing said. Granted, that was the 100-year flood, but we're finding, we're hitting those marks, and we just had some huge rains that dumped, I don't know, what was it, three inches in an hour or something like that? It was...
Inch and a half yesterday.
Yeah, I saw it going down the gutters. So I'm looking at the contours here. That parcel is in direct line for drainage of the house directly north to it, three in from that cul-de-sac, right? Am I reading that correctly? So the third house in from Oak Lane, those contours are pointing straight onto that lot. And then...
Are these --
Yeah, exactly. 915 gets less, 914 now, 913's down the middle of his lot, and now it's going down the steep hill. So the intent of this lot is he believes that he can use retaining walls and skirt the water to the, obviously, he's going to have to, right? To the perimeter, because he needs it flat, but he has demonstrated he will not put any water on anyone else's property. That's how we have to understand it, right?
No more than today, correct?
No more than today, okay. Secondly, you had mentioned in your write-up about the 18% slope. Can you talk a little bit about that, the significance of slopes that are 18%? And obviously, here we have a lot of slopes that are way more than 18%, or at least at 18%.
Yeah, so that's in the subdivision ordinance. And actually, there are no slopes within the plat that we're considering. The 18% slopes are over in the driveway area.
Okay, so, but he's going to be putting in this driveway? So although right now, there's trees on there that stabilize those slopes, the roots hold it, he's putting a driveway in that 18% slope area?
Yep. And so engineering has reviewed that, and they're recommending that a series of retaining walls would be better suited for this, rather than having the steep slope as shown. The applicant's agreeable to working with engineering and...
Is there any problem with the steep slopes now without retaining walls in that area, as far as you know? Drainage issues?
Not that I'm aware of, but...
Okay. So the engineering has said, if you are going to flatten this out and remove all those trees, we want to see some retaining walls?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is the wetland buffer. There's a stormwater calculation. Maybe I don't ask that of you, but how is that done? Like, where, how does he determine how much stormwater that thing needs to hold? Is it strictly just on his property, the water coming onto his property?
Yeah, that's probably something the applicant can answer.
Okay.
He is an engineer, too.
Thank you.
So there's going to be a driveway on that property? It's still city property, the right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay. So this is going to be a private driveway, and they're responsible for maintenance and everything?
Correct. They would, yep. Snow removal.
Great. Okay. Thanks.
So just one more time, and I know that this was back when you probably weren't born when this all happened, but why, I mean, there must have been some reasoning why they didn't say Lot 1, Block 1, Lot 2, Block 1. I just, why was it an outlot?
Because the street wasn't extended at that time.
But the right-of-way was.
The right-of-way was. As you can see, there's not a ton of detail in the minutes. It just talks about the status of this lot would be determined at the time of plating.
And you also pointed out what I was going to point out, that back then, too, wetlands weren't protected, and now this is a protected wetland. So even if this was coming through, and there weren't all the trees and all the other, would this be a buildable lot, because it is meeting the wetland buffer?
Yes, yes, with the exception of the lot depth requirement. Even though it is an existing lot. Again, like I say, this is so different from our standard requests.
All right. Go ahead, Ian.
Thanks. So just some history. First of all, just for disclosure, the applicant's family are family friends of mine, so I just wanted to disclose that to everyone. Could you walk me through the history of the plating? I believe there was a '75 plating and an '85 plating? And so...
Yes, so this was the plat in 1975. So again, here's the lot that we're looking at right here. So again, this was owned by the Austin family. And so they platted Grove Street, Oak Lane, created two lots on the west side and three lots on the south side of Grove Street. This was platted as one lot at that time. Let's see. Then fast forward to 1985, when this lot was proposed for development, they proposed to build a home on this Lot 1. But because of the road wasn't extended at that time, the property that we're looking at today was platted as an outlot.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie. That's all I had. Thanks.
Somewhere in the correspondence, or maybe it was the report, too, there is like a history of some of these deep lots were actually split at one point, and then they were merged? Is that true? I know I read that somewhere, and...
You might be referring to this lot here.
I didn't know if it included also all those lots south of it on Benton, where some of those are actually, those homes were built quite a long time ago, somewhere twenties, forties, or were at least developed during that time. I was just curious as to the timeline, and was there interest to actually merge this current lot into other ones?
Yeah, I believe that this property to the south was developed first, so when this was being platted, again, the thinking was to connect Oak Lane to Garden, to build additional lots on the north side of those lengthy lots.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you, Carrie. So is the applicant here, would they like to speak and present?
If you have questions?
There'll be a public hearing after the applicant speaks.
Good evening. I'm Lance Elliott, and I live at 5616 Dalrymple Road here in Edina. And thanks for taking your time to review, look at this tonight. And Carrie, thanks for the explanation and everything. I think you did a really good job with that. A couple of things I'll just bring up, there's been a lot of questions around the definition of an outlot, or what the purpose of an outlot is. You don't see many outlots in Edina anymore, because most of the land has been developed. And in the, out in the suburbs, outlots are used on most developments where, for a couple purposes. One would be if there is a portion of a large piece of property that was improved with streets and was ready for lots to be developed, and there was remaining property in that parcel that wasn't developed yet, or didn't have the streets developed, that portion of the property would be defined as an outlot. And there's even instances where all of the property has streets around it, and the property owner will just decide to wait to develop those lots later and just call it an outlot, purely to save on property taxes. It's usually the reason to not develop into lots. Or they don't know exactly what they're going to do for the lot layout at that point, so they'll just call it an outlot with the plan to develop it in the future. So this is the example where that land wasn't ready to be developed yet, because the idea was the street was going to come through, and it would be at that time. And now that we know that the street won't come through, there's kind of a burden on this lot to use the private driveway to get access to the improved street. There are a number of properties in the city of Edina that has the same arrangement, which I can provide addresses and everything. So the precedent has been set that there, it's not a super, it's not very, very common, but there are a number of properties that have this exact arrangement with a not-improved street in front of the home, and the driveway is on the, on the, on-street right-of-way that accesses the lot. And then the other point is there was some opposition, or some question on the length of the driveway being close to 200 feet, and there are a number of properties in the city that have driveways that exceed 200 feet, some that are twice as long as this one. So again, it's not completely out of the ordinary from the other properties. I guess the other question, or the big question on this one is in regards to the stormwater and the wetland that's there, and dealing with the stormwater and making sure that the plan improvements don't, you know, either encumber the neighbors or have a negative effect on the water, on the wetland pond that's there now. And from the standpoint of answering the question on the stormwater calculations, there's a pretty detailed modeling that takes place, and it's governed by the Nine Mile Creek Watershed and how that stormwater is calculated. And there's a number of different rain intensities, what's called a two-year, 10-year, 100-year rain, which are run through the model with this land incorporated in the model to see how heavy rains will impact it. And through those models is what I use to create the rainwater garden that Carrie showed on the plan, which is actually a rather large, not just a flower garden for, you know, butterflies and bees and things like that, but it's also an actual retention area that will catch water. So all of the water that runs off of not only our property, but the property up from the north of us, will come down, will get captured into the rainwater garden before it would end up running into the wetland. And that volume is designed to basically minimize the amount of water that actually runs to the wetland to keep that at or below the current runoff rates that are there now. In addition to that, in the driveway, there was some discussion on the steeper slopes that we're proposing to have the driveway through. Right now, the slopes that are there are pretty much bare soil. If you walk through there, it's buckthorn and brush, and there's no vegetation, and so if rain, especially if there's no leaves on the trees in the fall or the spring, there is considerable amount of runoff or erosion that's occurring on those slopes. Those slopes were left over from when the streets were built back decades ago, and just basically left as a steep pile. And volunteer cottonwoods have grown out of there and other trees that aren't really of high quality. Most of the trees that are within the driveway are topped off or fallen over and are basically either dead or dying and not in the best of shape. So the plan is to clean up that slope. The driveway this proposed is actually, it's a pervious paver driveway, so it's designed to actually take water into the driveway, so it doesn't runoff. So based on the calculations, the runoff, once the driveway is in, will actually be less than what it currently is. And there's really, other than the trees that are right at the front, at the cul-de-sac, the cottonwood trees are there, the driveway itself is only replacing, I believe, three or four trees that are within the driveway. And on the landscape plan that Carrie shows, there's, we're proposing, I believe, over 24 trees to be replanted just in that vicinity. So we're going to be increasing the total number of trees there that are in that area significantly with high-quality trees compared to the brush and the lesser-quality trees that are there now. And once we get ready to, and within the lot itself, if there's questions on trees, the majority of the mature oak trees that are on the lot next to the wetland within the vicinity are all, our intent is to keep all of those trees. And there are only, I believe, three or four trees in the center of the lot where the house would be, that I show on the tree preservation plan, that will actually be removed as a part of the project. We're planning to keep all of those mature oak trees. I still need to meet with the arborist to just make sure they're healthy trees and that we don't come in and build a home and then spend a lot of money to remove a tree that's in poor shape. But our plan at that point is to greatly increase the number of trees that are on the lot compared to what's there now. So those are kind of the main points. Sorry to ramble too much on everything. There's a lot of information, a lot of detail on this site that I've gone through, so I just want to make sure that I pass that on.
Great. Thank you so much. Yeah, so I'm sure there will be other questions for the applicant. Sue?
Yeah, I am interested in that buffer there. What is the width of this rain garden that you're proposing?
So I can maybe, I think I have a diagram that might show the buffer, if I don't take too long to find it here.
So the idea is what, obviously, when you are creating the pad for the house, anything on the pad area is gone. You have to take out the trees, the ground cover, everything. And I'll just take your word at the stormwater calculation, all that stormwater that would have landed and percolated through the soil there is now, you feel, you're confident will be absorbed in this rain garden buffer, correct?
Correct. I don't know if I can talk more to you, but I'll show the... The green area that I show on this plan basically demonstrates where the wetland buffer is being planned. The rainwater garden is located in that buffer. The wetland, the Nine Mile Creek Watershed requires a 20-foot average wetland buffer. We're proposing over 25 feet. So we're actually proposing a buffer that's, this represents the buffer width that we are voluntarily increasing the buffer size from what's being required, just for a couple reasons. One is I wanted to have enough room to incorporate this very large rainwater garden. And then the other reason is it just ended up being a very natural break line for where the big oak trees are and everything, to keep the, to bring the buffer out further away than what's required. And so that... And so that combination of, and right now, the current buffer that is there, similar to where the driveway is going, it's, it's basically bare soil. So it's buckthorn and bare soil. And our goal is, if you look at what's in green here, that that will be completely vegetated with a standard wetland buffer design with the rainwater garden and vegetation that, that will not only benefit the runoff from our property, but also benefit the wetland as a whole.
Can you give me an idea again, how wide is, is your actual rain garden? Not the buffer, but you had a detail section through that?
Yes, on the plan, I don't remember off the top of my head if it's 10 feet wide.
Did I also hear you say that the water, it will also be able to absorb the water that comes from other properties coming in that direction?
Correct. The majority of the water will continue to run, as it currently does, around the perimeter of the site. There's a, a typical drainage swale that runs on both, both sides of the property. If I open up the plan, this one might be a little tough to, to see here, but... Can I zoom in at all, or? So the grades coming from the north here run into the property from this direction. And right now, the gradient from these two homes run basically to the south and the west, running that gradient. And that comes into what is basically a natural swale in this area. I'm redefining that swale to, to be a little bit more defined. It will all be on our, we're taking all of that on our property rather than with the, with the neighbor's home being so close to the west. Typically, the drainage swale is shared half and half, but I designed it so that it's, that it's entirely on our property and running to the south, and then it will make its way to the wetland from that direction. So it's improving the drainage from these properties here. And then the property, the amount of the runoff that is on the north, on the east side, that will come down and comes in and comes towards the, gets caught by the rainwater garden at this point. There's a part of it that'll stay in its current state of just continuing to run, run south. I've tried to capture as much as I could in the rainwater garden, but it's made to accommodate all of that.
Are you confident on that swale, that you can be successful there on the west, the west property line?
Confident in regards to...
Controlling it, that it will stay all on your property and direct down in that direction? Because the, the natural flow of the water right now is across that property, right through the center. True, it's up on sort of that northwest corner.
Well, actually, the, the water, like if you were to drop water here today, right here, it runs to the west and then to the south. This is a higher point here than here, so it does, does kind of drain to the, in that direction currently now.
Right, okay. So you're, you feel confident that swale there will be able to capture the water and channel it down?
Correct, yep.
Any other questions for the applicant? I had a quick one. So with that rain garden, you know, for it to do what you're proposing it to do, you'll have to kind of maintain that also, and then you understand how to do it, I'm guessing, or?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then I was also looking at the, what trees you were proposing to remove. And you were saying that, looks like there's like three... Maybe some of them are already damaged, those oaks, I mean, they are beautiful trees. But you're also showing that you're going to maintain the majority of them. And I know Carrie, in one of our conditions, was stating that they would have to meet the tree ordinance. Can we go beyond that to require that the trees that they're proposing to save have to be maintained?
You, you could, you could put that condition in. I, I would say, you know, looking at his landscape plan, the amount of trees that they're planting back is far exceeds our tree ordinance. But that, that is a reasonable condition that you could, you could say that tree protection, fencing, go around those trees during construction, those kind of things.
I mean, yeah, there's a lot of caliper being added, but, you know, it's not often you see 36-inch oaks and such, so. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you would maintain that rain garden so that it does its work. Anyone else have any questions? No, okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, so now we are opening it up for the public. So everyone can come up to either podium, you get three minutes to speak, so just kind of keep an eye on the lights. You'll see a green, then it goes yellow, then it's red, and then we like say, "Sit down." So, and if you could also state your name and address, that would be great, thank you.
Sure, I'll put the other written statement. First off, thank you, commissioners and city staff, for the opportunity to voice my concerns tonight regarding this proposal and variance request. My name's Scott Hughes and I live at 5509 Grove Street. My wife Stacy and I bought our home in the summer of 2011. It's actually a 1911 old house, probably the first one in the neighborhood. We found it to be the most idyllic setting with privacy and woods on both the north and south sides of our home. Stacy and I are proud parents of four children. Lenny's 10, Noah's 8, Eleanor's 7, and our youngest, Harriet, is 4 years old. As you're aware, this proposed Elliott development is significantly impacting numerous adjacent properties. Seven actually border this outlot, and there are between 25 and 30 homes who can visually see this outlot today. This property is currently, currently platted as an outlot, as you know, and does not meet the city requirements to be converted to a buildable lot. If this outlot would be converted to a buildable lot, negative impacts would occur to loss of privacy and quiet enjoyment, increased stormwater runoff, impacts to the existing wetland, loss of wildlife, impact to property values, loss of mature trees, and most significantly, alter the essential characteristics of our neighborhood. I know some neighbors are present here tonight at this meeting, but there are a significant number of neighbors who are out of town this week, and I know they have voiced their concerns in writing to the city of Edina website. I see the Bales photos were included in the agenda today, and I'm hoping that the rest of the comments from our neighbors have been shared with the commissioners as well. These submitted written comments, along with the neighbors who are here tonight opposing this development, shows the unity of our neighborhood against this Elliott development proposal. It's not just one person or property, it's the whole neighborhood. And the reality of the matter is there are three adjacent properties who will be significantly and negatively impacted. This would be the Bales to the west, Fribones and our house directly to the north. The ones really impacted in my world will be my wife and four children, who are currently homeschooled. My wife and our children are home on a daily basis, so more so than those that leave for school or work each day. And they leverage the woods to the south and north for daily science and wildlife lessons. Not sure how many people know this, but there's actually a natural wildlife trail that connects the woods to the north, owned by the city, to these woods or outlot in question, that will be demolished by the Elliott development. Daily, we see deer, turkeys, fox, and other animals making the daily walk between the two safe zones. This development will drastically and negatively impact these animals and take away the science lessons that my children's have on a daily basis. As part of the variance, I understand it that the requester must be able to affirmatively answer the question of, will this variance request alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood? In my opinion, there is no way that the Requestor or the city can say that this development does not alter the essential characteristic of our neighborhood. Anyone who has been to our neighborhood notices the mature trees, privacy, and natural preservation with this outlot, all of which would be eliminated if this development was approved and the Elliott plan carries forward. If any of you commissioners have not visited the site, I strongly suggest that you do so before casting a vote tonight. I stand here before you tonight, along with my fellow neighbors, asking the Planning Commission to turn down this replat and development project. This proposed development does not meet city code and also significantly and negatively impacts my property, the neighbor's property, and absolutely changes the essential characteristics of our neighborhood. It's simple, this property was originally platted as an outlot and shall remain as an outlot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you. And just to add to that, we have received all the comments and we have reviewed those. And then also, I know there's a lot of people who want to speak, and one of the things that we ask is that some of the comments aren't repeated. You know, we, we've already seen that, so welcome, come on up.
The yellow light goes on. How much time? How much time is left when the yellow light goes on? Thank you. Hello, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rick Bale, and along with my wife Lisa, my children Sarah and Jack, we live at 5805 Oak Lane. And you'll know 5805 Oak Lane because it is Lot 1, Block 1 on the drawings that we've been looking at tonight. I believe my letter is in the record for the commissioners. So what I've asked for, I'm not, I, I, I guess I would say I oppose the development. I can understand, you know, why Mr. Elliott is here. He's been very forthcoming in talking to us about his plans. We've been able to go through him with him. And in fact, we were just out walking the driveway area recently with respect to the issue that I've raised, which is I'm requesting that the driveway follow the center line of the right-of-way so that it, I have an opportunity to minimize the significant impact, significant impact on my property. And it comes off of the irons that are my southwest and southeast iron. So again, I have an opportunity to buffer that. When Mr. Elliott and I walked the driveway area, first of all, my understanding is the city engineer has made essentially the same recommendation in the conditions that they're recommending for the variance. And I would ask that the center line requirement be a condition of the variance. Mr. Elliott and I walked the driveway area and the, the main problem I have is on the southern boundary because it's right up against my southern property line. And Mr. Elliott was agreeable to the center line, putting the driveway on the center line on that east-west run, which is between my southwest and southeast iron, to get it back off my property because that driveway, we live in the front yard, we obviously have no backyard. We bought the house in '94. I can't explain why the house was positioned on the property the way it is. I would like to get my hands on the fella who put the house on the lot in that condition. And we may be, I'm sure Mr. Elliott and I, depending on how things go, will have to be discussing, you know, the proximity of my house to the lot. But that's my request. The utilities, I heard someone say the utilities were on the right-of-way. I would like the utilities to be on the right-of-way. The drawings that have been presented to you, however, show the utilities going on my property, on the easement, all right, it's an easement, I get that. But in light of the other burdens on my property, I don't know if this is the time to ask for that condition. I guess I will ask, you can tell me it's not the time to ask for that condition, but I would like to ask for that as a condition of the easement or the variance that the utilities go on the right-of-way, not on my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Khan. I live at 5804 Oak Lane, which is the house on the west side of the circle. And the discussion of what's going to happen to the right-of-way and where the driveway will be is somewhat concerning to us because the farther it moves to the west, the more trees are going to come down. And right now, we're, obviously, if it is a right-of-way, and I'm not sure exactly where the edge of our property is versus the edge of the right-of-way, but the more trees that come down, the, the more it changes our outlook or what, you know, the feel of our house of being, having trees around and not being, looking down on a driveway, but having the trees. And I, I wasn't here at the beginning, but I, I was curious as to why in the 1985 replat, the boundary line, is that a diagonal instead of perpendicular? Does anybody, is there a reason for that?
I can answer when, when you're done.
Yeah, so Carrie will answer that when you're done. Go for it now.
Yeah, I, I believe it has to do with the cul-de-sac. When it was rounded, there was extra right-of-way taken. So in order to provide more buildable area on the lot, they angled, they angled it.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that it would change our, the feel of our house and when we're talking about the impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Braun, 5809 Johnson Drive. Just want to thank Susan Lee for your great questions. Appreciate that. And Joanne Olson, thank you very much. I appreciate, good to know that our representatives are asking good questions, so I appreciate that. I just want to go on record and say, you know, I don't think this is a really great idea. It doesn't really impact my property, so I guess from that perspective, I was just informed of this meeting and just wanted to make sure that I get registered in on that. If it was such a great idea, I would expect that the city would have completed at least part of the project to make that a buildable lot. So this kind of seems like an acme dynamite kit to me. To your point, I think you brought up a question called "practical difficulty", something I've never heard before, but clearly, it seems to be that that line of logic applies here, that there are pretty significant thresholds that are involved. We're here making a lot of exceptions to make something happen that really doesn't seem like it should. And with all due respect to the engineer in the room, I've seen plenty of expert opinion not work out very well. And this kind of seems like we're in that realm. So just my observations, my opinion, I appreciate the opportunity to let you guys know that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so bringing it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. Who would like to start? Alan? Yeah, you can, sure can.
Carrie, just in, in question to the last statement, does the city drive the plating process or the Austin family would have initiated the plating process for the property?
The Austin family or the property to the south would have driven the, the plating process. The city doesn't initiate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions, comments? Quiet. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Well, no one obviously wants to say anything.
Yeah.
There's a lot to say, but at the same time, I think it becomes a simple decision for a lot of us. As an engineer, you can make anything work, really. And I believe that all of these solutions are creative enough and will definitely mitigate all the, you know, the stormwater issues. But there's, you know, bigger considerations here that I think we're wrestling between. I think, you know, it's making, you know, the economics work from the development side check, you know, the environmental side, and that's kind of where there's this blurred line. And then certainly, you know, the public side, and that's the, that's the integrity and characteristic of, the character of the neighborhood. I think that's where it enters into, you know, that little sliver of discretion of whether we think this proposal and/or future development would harm adjacent... and/or future development would harm adjacent properties. And that's where I'm stuck. Not stuck, but that's where I'm making my simple decision based off of principle of other similar rulings we've had. I think engineering and staff and, you know, they're making their recommendation for what we're seeing. And I think what we see is logical and it works, and it's a good way to mitigate the issues of this development. But is this development right for that spot? And the challenge is, it has always been an outlot, so neighbors have been enjoying this natural setting that actually is someone else's property that they were always planning on developing. So there is this, this thing we have to balance. And I mean, that's just where I felt like the struggle was before tonight, and I've still felt it through tonight, but I kind of have my decision, but I don't, I'm not going to try to persuade anyone. But that's just to tee up conversation.
I guess I have a question for Carrie also. It might be a follow-on to Chris's comment or question. Carrie, what's before us tonight? Is it, is it the conversion of the outlot or is it the variance? Because, let me ask that question another way. If there weren't a variance, would the outlot get platted as a matter of right?
Not necessarily.
Okay, how would that work?
Well, yeah, let me rethink that. Because the lot, if the lot met all of our standards, we would have a hard time saying no.
So really, the issue is just, is the variance?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Carrie.
This is a tough one. And Commissioner Bennett, I think you summed it up, although you didn't really give your conclusion. I think, you know, it's, it's, the people who have lived around this lot have benefited for 25, 30 years from having this lot not be developed. And what a blessing. But I think the fact that you had this gift doesn't mean that someone shouldn't be able to develop their lot. You were just really lucky that for decades you were able to enjoy it because someone hadn't yet developed. And they have a right to develop, it's their lot. And the variance is not egregious. It's not anything that we wouldn't approve typically. And so I don't really see any reason why this shouldn't be developed, particularly when you consider that the applicant has been really thoughtful about how to mitigate the concerns regarding the types of trees you'll see. In fact, it could be an improvement over what's currently there. And also, the wetland and some of those environmental issues. So I think we reframe this and say, you guys were darn lucky that for decades you were able to enjoy something that you didn't have to pay taxes on and you didn't have to mow or do anything else with. And now, the person has a right to develop, it's their property. And so I would support this.
Thanks, Sheila. Anyone else? Go ahead, Lou.
So first, I'd like to agree with Joanne about the comment on the trees and that an older, larger tree is much more valuable than five new trees or whatever. So I think that's important to consider. I'm trying to look at this through the, through the lens of climate change and through the lens of housing in the Twin Cities and how we don't have enough housing. But it comes up kind of both ways on that. So, I mean, we're adding one housing unit, so it's not huge. But in terms of climate change, on the one hand, we have a water problem, and so we have greater amounts of water coming down as we've probably seen by the storm we had yesterday. And I've seen in my own neighborhood where, you know, engineering said something was going to work and it, there's been water problems in the neighborhood. So, so I, there's a conflict there. And, you know, it's, the watershed district says it's fine, so that sounds good, but I'm a little conflicted on that. So, this is a difficult one. And, I mean, it was platted for, not that lot, but it was, the street was designed to be put in there and potentially another house. So it's difficult, but I think, what am I trying to say here? It's difficult, but I think there, there are compelling reasons why I think it makes sense. So, anyway, that's it.
Yeah, I think the previous Commissioners have summed it up. My own feelings, I guess my aspect is I did, I found the developers' arguments and presentation compelling. He looks like he's looked at all the, all the problems. He has been working with the neighbors. The Nine Mile, Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, I mean, they have tentatively signed off on it. The engineering department, it looks like the driveway improvements, the tree plan, these are all, I think, pluses. I think I'll support it.
All right. Well, I agree, it's a tough one because it is, it's a, you know, this beautiful piece of property with these trees and this nature, natural area and with the wildlife and it is, but I kind of agree with Commissioner Berube. I mean, it is, it's just been, you've been lucky to have it. And I believe the variance, you know, when somebody mentioned the exceptions, it's just that lot depth. And really, when you look around, the adjacent lots have that same depth. So it's a tough one. I wish we had wooded lots all over, but I think that they do have the right to develop this, so I would support it too. No other comments or motion or, yeah, sure.
Question for Carrie. Say this does go through. Are we involved potentially with the next step? Or could they build whatever to code?
Yeah, so this will go to the City Council for preliminary plat with the variance. Then they would have to come back for final plat, but that goes just directly to the City Council. So if the council approves the final plat, they could build a home on that lot as long as it met all the setback requirements. They would not come back to Planning Commission. They haven't indicated that they would build outside of the setback requirements here.
I, this particular case, it doesn't seem to me that it's clear that they have a right to build. I mean, that's why they're here to ask for the plating. I mean, it's not platted as a buildable site. The environmental issue is huge. And we, as a city, have to start looking at that. We don't have too many more wooded parcels. But that, we know that the trees that we're replacing with cannot replace 20-inch, 36-inch diameter trees. People don't like buckthorn, but they do a great job of holding stability in soil. Their roots are tenacious. And we are so sensitive to ponds that we've already said we've got required setbacks from ponds. We know that there is no pond here, but that area serves as a wetland drainage for the entire area. We know how edina works. We've seen people's backyards that just have become flooding, holding ponds for the entire area. If this property gets developed, it probably will become one of those. So I'm surprised that this request has even come before us. But I think as a Planning Commission, Planning Commissioner, I have to really consider sort of the environmental impact. We're not going to have a lot of chances to, to up our tree count or maintain what we do have. And we know that right now, it works. Once we change it, we don't know that for sure that it will work. And then the final thing is, I appreciate the residents who really, truly are impacted. I think they can speak better than anyone on this Planning Commission dais right now because they're the ones who have to live with it. They're unified in that statement. And I think the one point that I can't discount is when we talk so much about character and then we refuse to define what it is, I think truly, a stand of trees is character. If we're not going to call that character, then there is no hope for our world and our environment. So I want to thank the residents who did come tonight. I think that the spokesperson who spoke was, spoke very eloquently. And that doesn't change by generation. That doesn't change because we say we have to have more houses or we're only going to get more people. We can keep the best of what we have right now.
I agree with all of the other comments. This is a really difficult one in terms of balancing current property owner and neighbor needs and feelings and objections with the rights of a landowner. And to help guide my decision, I looked at and have considered, what was the original content, intent? The intent was for that right-of-way to be developed into a street or a road. And it appears that the intent at one point in time was for those lots to be platted or, or developed. I also look at the surrounding lot sizes, and they're very comparable to what is being proposed. So in terms of overall character of the neighborhood, the lot size isn't out of character for what exists surrounding it today. I do understand and empathize with the current homeowners that there would be a sense of loss of that open space. But as Commissioner Berube had stated, they've had benefit of that space, but the property does belong to someone else. And it is very difficult, but I would be in support.
All right. Is there anyone ready to make a motion?
I will move approval of the preliminary plat and variance subject to the conditions and findings. Outline the staff memo with the addition of one further condition is that is to make best efforts to move the driveway to the center line of the right-of-way, understanding that there are some very steep grades involved on two of those sides. So you're pushing, you know, dead middle might actually require gigantic retaining wall. So I, I think, but that, in keeping in line with that, we need to try and get that driveway, especially along that southern side, to the middle as much as possible. Does that make sense, Carrie?
It does. That condition is number eight. It just deals with the east, with the east-west portion.
I just lost everything.
Okay.
Can, I suggest a friendly amendment?
You sure may.
So could we, would you also consider that on their landscaping plan where they're showing protecting those larger trees, that those are actually preserved? And then, I'm looking at the utility plan too. And I know there's a request to see if you could not have the utilities. I know it's within the right-of-way, but I don't know what we can do with that. It looks like there's not really a good option, so maybe I'll, I'll remove that one. Protect the trees.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
So two, two. You got those two? So it was approved. But thank you all for being here. All right, so the next public hearing is a conditional use permit for Our Lady of Grace at 5051 Eden Avenue. And Emily will be presenting.
Good evening. The subject property, 5051 Eden Avenue, is 20.6 acres and is the current and existing site to Our Lady of Grace Church and School. Our Lady of Grace, which is the applicant tonight, has submitted a multi-phase master plan development for improvements that include a priest residence, activity center, parish gathering space, school expansion, and other remodeled areas within the existing buildings of the church and school. To accommodate tonight's request, the following is required. A conditional use permit for the expansion of the religious institution. A height variance for the tallest addition on site to be 47 and a half feet. A 63-foot street-side variance to the east property line, which is Normandale Road. A 25-foot variance to the west property line. And a 51-foot variance to the rear yard setback on the south property line. A sign variance to allow 100-square-foot building sign. And a 15-foot variance to allow a fence and play area to be placed adjacent to the property line on the east. So, let me, my stuff organized here. So a traffic study was completed by SPAC and, which looks at the Eden Avenue and Normandale Road intersection. The traffic study details possible solutions for the intersection when the school is expanded in its future phases. Engineering staff recommended that no action is needed until new construction leads to an increase in 110 additional students. At that time, an update to the traffic study would be required. Staggering start times may be required or the applicant will share in cost of a new roundabout. The subject property is not the only property that affects that intersection, so that would also be taken into consideration when sharing the cost or looking at implications in future phased additions.
Emily, can you point which intersection you're referring to?
Yes, it's Eden Avenue and Normandale Road, this intersection. So it's the Frontage Road, Highway 100, and Eden Avenue. The addition, like I said, is not the only, or this site is not the only contributing site to that intersection. So it would depend, this intersection and its success or failure also depends on future development of surrounding sites. There's no additional parking that's required with this application, but the applicant is requesting or adding a small lot to improve access to the existing sanctuary. As you all know, parking requirements for churches and religious institutions are based on the maximum size or the maximum seating capacity of the largest place of assembly. And the proposed activity center, which is the largest portion of the addition, will not seat more than 900 people, which is equal or less to the existing sanctuary space on the site today. The exhibits shown on your screens show all of the proposed new construction at full build-out, which includes multiple phases. The first phase is the southwest portion of the site, which would include the new priest residence. So as I had stated, there's multiple variances that are requested tonight. A 15-foot setback variance is requested for the proposed play area to be placed on the east property line, which is shown on your screens in yellow. A 63-foot setback variance to the east property line for a school and parish administration offices. And that area, or that setback is shown here in orange. A 51-foot variance to the south property line, which matches the existing current setback to the south on existing buildings, and that is shown here in pink. And then a 25-foot setback variance to the west property line for the construction of that new priest residence, shown here in green. Staff believes that these setback variances are justified. The practical difficulties include the existing location of the church and the associated parking on site today. The proposed variance will allow for the new additions to tie into existing buildings, preserving existing trees and maximizing open space on the lot. The location of the priest residence will provide an appropriate transition into the neighborhood. The existing priest residence was at one point in time located off of Highway 100. Another one of the variance requests tonight is for a sign variance to allow for 100-square-foot building sign. The applicant is showing two locations, both on the north elevation and on the east elevation facing Highway 100. So here is the proposed location to the north, on the north elevation, and here is the proposed So here is the proposed location to the north, on the north elevation, and here is the proposed location facing east. Although the location of the existing church is zoned R1, the site itself allows for signage that would typically be seen in more of a commercially zoned area, due to the building size and location against Highway 100. The proposed signage will be located on the east and north elevations, away from residential neighborhoods, and therefore would have limited impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. Another variant, or another variance request tonight is for the height, is for the height, for the maximum height of the building additions that will be constructed in future phases. The height variance is to allow for the tallest addition to be 47 and 1/2 feet. The maximum height allowed in this zoning district is 40 feet. The tallest on, the tallest structure on-site will remain to be the sanctuary steeple, as shown in the elevations. The applicant has used a flat roof on the tallest addition proposed, to minimize the height to neighboring properties, and has placed the addition relatively low on-site. The proposed height allows for appropriate curriculum in the modern gym space and both the cafeteria spaces as well. The flat roof will help the addition keep a low profile, and is settled in between existing two-story classroom buildings that have pitched roofs. So it helps eliminate visibility from the surrounding neighborhoods. This is the phasing plan that the applicant has provided. It includes the newly constructed buildings, as well as the remodeling of existing buildings on-site. The first phase, like I said, is the priest residence located in the southwest corner of the subject property. And then here are the proposed building additions. The majority, or the main building material that's shown is brick, and that will match the existing brick that's on-site today. One thing that I didn't mention at the beginning, is that tonight, the variances and the conditional use permit can be reviewed separately. If building permits aren't pulled within one year for the variances, or for the building, the building, new buildings that require variances, the applicant may request a one-year extension. Otherwise, the variance requests would need to be filed prior to construction in the future. And tonight, the applicant is here so they can talk a little bit about their phasing plan, and what their timing projections are on the full build-out, but I wanted to let you know that. And with that, staff believes that the requirements for a conditional use permit have been met. There will not be an adverse effect on utilities or service. It will generate traffic within the capacity of the streets. It doesn't have a negative effect on public health and safety. It won't impede normal development on surrounding properties, and it conforms to the zoning requirements with, minus the variance requests and the comprehensive plan. So tonight, staff recommends approval with, of the conditional use permit with the proposed variances, subject to the findings and conditions listed in the staff report. So I can stand for questions, and the applicant, as well as a representative from SPAC Consulting, is here to answer questions on the traffic plan as well.
Okay, great. Emily, could, maybe just real quickly, could you just show again, the existing buildings, is that versus the proposed? Okay.
So the grayed-out buildings here are existing. The purple is all the new construction. Or additions to the existing buildings.
Right. So then when I, I just look at the phasing plan...
That includes remodeling of addition, of existing buildings. So the colors there would also correspond to interior remodel work.
So if you look at this, where are the new buildings?
So this purple area, this area, um, this gathering space, and then the priest residence, I believe, is all of the new, newly constructed.
Okay. Thank you. How many other, could I go question?
Could you please show the photograph again, and point out what the surrounding properties are?
Sure. This photograph? Or the aerial?
I think it was the aerial.
Yeah.
I was just curious, what's adjacent to the property?
Yes. So to the east is Highway 100, and the Edina Country Club Golf Course. To the north is the new, what is it? Avidore, and building on stilts. Is right here. And so this is the building on stilts, the commercial building, office building. This is the bus site.
The old bus?
Yeah, the old bus site. And this is Grandview Square. And then, existing neighborhoods are to the south.
Emily, thank, very good presentation. Thank you for, uh, good information. Question, a couple of questions about signs. The variance is due to the zoning for this property being R1. If this were a commercial district, what would be, and so they're asking for, what, 100-square-foot sign, is that correct?
Correct.
If this were a commercial district, would that also be a variance, or would that meet the commercial, would that allow, would a commercial district zoning allow for 100-square-foot sign?
Yes, in some districts, yes, it would. Mixed development district, MDD 6, would allow up to 100 square foot of a building, or a sign. Typically, churches are more immersed in a residential area, I would say, and so the 24 square feet then would come into play with fitting into existing neighborhoods. The existing church location here, being next to commercial and office areas, as well as Highway 100, and based on the location of the proposed signs with variances, I felt that they were more commercial in nature.
Thank you. And so I'm looking at the windows with the, you know, the rectangles behind the, at the back of the room, and I'm trying to get a sense of, and maybe the applicant can help with this, like, like, what would be an approximation of what the sign size would be?
Eight foot twelve.
You know, maybe the, when the applicant's...
The applicant might have, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Emily.
Really minor question. Why is the minimum setback 95 feet?
Do you know why that was originally written into the conditional use permit?
I do. It goes back to the Interlochen Country Club and their maintenance facility building. Previous setback requirement for all conditional uses was 50 feet from all lot lines. But with the construction of that maintenance facility at, at Interlochen, the city council changed the requirement to 95 feet. That was the setback of that facility.
Any other questions for Emily? Go ahead.
Are there any regulations about the lighting of the sign?
Um, if they're illuminated signs, and they're adjacent to residential property, then they can't be illuminated during, I believe the hours are 10, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, if the building is not open at that time.
So that, because this borders single-family homes, it's considered that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Can you pull up that aerial again, and, and point out there where the signs are going to be? Actually, you had one that was sort of red, red shaded with the property.
The, where the existing signs will, or where the proposed signs are?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the proposed signs will go on future building additions?
Yeah. Could you show that red, uh, it just, it's closer right now. I know it's prob, it doesn't exist, but you could at least, I, I liked it because you could see the highway.
The red. Which, the aerial that I was...
There was an aerial, yeah.
This aerial? Oh, this one, sorry.
Yeah, that one, that one. Okay. So approximately, where would that, that be? On that corner there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Facing, they had, the applicant showed two locations, one facing north and one facing east.
Okay. So it's not really seenable by the, the residential area to the south, it looks like?
It's not.
Okay. Secondly, their current sign, where is that? And what's going to happen to that?
Um, the applicant might be able to speak. They didn't address anything as far as the freestanding signs, so I can assume that they're proposing to leave that there. That, I believe...
Somewhere there, where your arrow is, yeah. Okay. And then you had mentioned, or in the report, staff report, a $4,000 cash payment.
Yes. So on your, it was $40,000 cash payment. And on the dais tonight, there was an updated engineering memo. And so initially, the engineer had requested a payment at, with the first building permit, or with approval of the conditional use permit variances. It had been discussed with the applicant, that once the number of students increases by 110, that's when they would discuss, as far as sharing payments of that intersection improvement, or they would discuss staggering start times for the school.
Okay. That's good. Because I was, my next question, which I don't have to ask now, is, is how was that amount arrived at?
And that was, the engineer did it with figuring out which portion of traffic was affecting that intersection, and so they proposed that a traffic study will be reviewed again in the future, once 110 students are added to the school.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Emily. So the applicant is here, like to speak.
Hello, Chair, Commissioners, City Staff. My name is Jay Fournay. I'm with Opus Architects and Engineers at 10350 Bren Road West. I'm also an Edina resident. Uh, want to, first off, start off and say thank you to City Staff. They've been very helpful in us navigating the process, and really being able to partner with them, and talk through what the best path for Our Lady of Grace is. They're currently at their 75th anniversary, and what they're trying to do here is not only look at what they're going to do in the immediate timeframe, but also the next 75 years. Because they're looking at the longevity, they want to build generational buildings, and they want, they, they believe that they have a strong foundation here in Edina, and they, they want to still continue to be a part of this neighborhood and community. And so we're really making sure, we're trying to get everyone heard. We've had our neighborhood meeting on June 24th, so we did have some neighbors, and I would say we had positive feedback at that meeting. I'm not sure if any additional comments have come to you. We might hear some tonight. But, a few things to clarify, right off the bat. The, uh, the size of a sign, about that 100-square-foot range, if you're looking at the square directly to the right or left of the double doors, that's probably about 100 square feet. And proportionally, it might be more rectangular or linear, but in general, that's about the size of the sign, and it's about appropriate for what you'd see if you're driving down the freeway at 55 miles an hour, to catch your eye. We have been strategic to put that at the top of the building, and also face north and east, so it's away from the residents as well. The gymnasium location, which is the tallest building on the campus, is proposed to be pushed as far to the north and east as possible, without impacting the existing parking lot. And the goal there is, one, it's about an eight-foot difference from a finished floor level to what the southern properties are. So it pushes that building down even lower. So if we have a typical 40-foot height allowance, we're really looking for 47, 6, call it 48 if you round up. You know, that building, as perceived from our neighbors to the south, the residential ones that we're most concerned about, is right about that 40-foot height limit. The phasing, we really don't know about timing yet. We know the priest residence is the most immediate to come, and that would probably start construction, I think, ideally this fall, if possible, if we can beat the weather. The larger additions may come in the spring, but it really comes down to, they're in a capital campaign fundraising standpoint right now, and so really, when it's the right time, they'll be looking to do that. The existing monument sign is on that berm, facing Highway 100. We don't intend to do anything different with that. And one other thing I did want to clarify with regards to the traffic memo, and what we've left open, is within the traffic report, there was suggestions of offering the school an opportunity to stagger its start times, so the preschool, the lower school, the middle school could start at different times, which could alleviate some of the traffic congestion instead of the payment in lieu. And another option could be, there's probably going to be some land taking, a part of, as part of the property to create a larger solution. Rotary is, or a roundabout is what's being suggested at this time. There's some value with that land as well. So, as, as far as Our Lady of Grace is concerned, they're willing to be a participant in that discussion when the time comes, our population grows, and we are increasing the traffic there. We want to have a discussion about all these pieces and parts and opportunities to make sure the traffic is calmed, but also making sure it's safe. Beyond that, the architecture is going to fit within the neo-Georgian architectural style. Heavily brick, long-term materials, high quality. We want it fit within the neighborhood. We want to be there. It's going to all be one solid campus, and we're really excited to bring this to the table. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, we'd like to hear your comments. Thank you.
Don't, don't sit down yet. Nice try. Are there any, are there any questions for the applicant? Yeah, go for it.
I'll go, I'll go to the signage. So I find the existing sign very easily seen from Highway 100. What is, what's the reason for the additional signage?
Uh, I think the concern is, depending on where you're coming from, northbound, southbound on Highway 100, and the, how low that sign, the existing monument sign is, it does get a bit lost, and their preference is to have something a little bit higher to announce the community.
But there is no intent to, to remove the existing, once it's on the building? Okay.
We haven't had a discussion, so not right now.
Okay. I, I find them, the materials to be very compatible with what's there, so it's, it's a beautiful building. The courtyard is all new, then? That landscaping part's going to be new as well?
Correct. We're hoping to improve the courtyard as part of one of the phases, and really start to activate. If you know the campus, right now, there's a lot of traffic that happens on the backside. We're trying to bring that back out front, get it away from the neighbors, and really kind of energize the front yard of the community.
Thank you. I had a quick ques, go for it, Iain has a quick question.
Yeah, sign. Thank you for your answer about the size. Now I have a question about the style. Will the style be roughly the similar, a similar style to what exists today? Because what, what you're seeing in architecture for signs, sometimes it become more, "Here we are," and like, more like a XL Energy Center than what the traditional styles have been. I'm wondering if you've had any thought on style?
I'll, I'll speak for myself. We do have representatives from Our Lady of Grace as well, and our construction team, I should have said that a little bit earlier. But architecturally, a sign like an XL Energy sign wouldn't really fit on this building, and really, this is a part of the community, it would want to be fitting within the architecture, so it would be respectfully designed to the style of the architecture. I would say we haven't designed it yet, we're just suggesting it could be here. They may never put up a sign, they may do a sign, but I can't really say what that final design is, other than we would expect it to be fitting with the architecture.
Here's my, I guess as a comment, as a question, but the, the current sign is, is nice. It, it, you know, so something along that style would be a, would be a nice fit with the community.
I would agree.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So my quick question is, again, looking at the recommendations from the SPAC Consulting report, another one was, the, a new one-way road connecting to Normandale Road, south of Central Access, not be constructed. I don't think that was mentioned in the, but is that, do you agree with that?
I can clarify that, yeah. So on their original, as we're moving quickly through these processes, we had shown a driveway where the existing, or the former priest residence was, and we were thinking we might use that for preschool pickup drop-off lane, that has since been removed, so we have no issues with that comment.
Okay, great. And then, again, apologize, I maybe should have asked Emily this question, but maybe we can bring up a site plan, or can we do that? Just, um, how, is there like a sidewalk and bike path, and is there a protected way for the students to get to that site and within?
All right. So, one of the biggest changes is that, is just that. So today, you've probably driven by, and you've seen the flag banners out to try and help control traffic and create safe movement for the pedestrians. What we are doing is, down the center aisle here, we're creating a new boulevard, so we're not changing the parking count. All right. So can you hear me now? We're, we're adding a boulevard down the center of the parking lot. We're not changing the parking quantity, so that will remain the same, and we would be compliant with city allowance. But what we are doing is providing this new pedestrian boulevard that connects the baseball fields to the front door. It also bifurcates the parking lot, so we can have bus parking or preschool parking on one side, school pickup, parent drop-off on the other, and utilize the center boulevard to move students in and out of the school safely, on pedestrian paths rather than through the parking lot itself.
You know, I'm just trying to remember, I was just out there, and I didn't, can't remember, but is there like a safe sidewalk and, you know, bike path along the road, the frontage road?
Yes, there's also a trail along the frontage road, which we would tie to as well, to encourage the local students to be able to bike to school.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Okay, Sue.
I just want to follow up on what Commissioner Nemirov said, actually. I, I would tend to agree that the, the location and the style of the existing sign is quite effective. And maybe consider...
and maybe consider either redoing that as your signage? There's something about signage on building that is a little tough, so without seeing it, it would be hard to know whether that's the right thing to approve at this point, but I might suggest that, look at that signage spot, it's a great spot, I, I see it coming south or north, it's lit at night, because it doesn't, you know, get in anybody's way. Building signage would have to be more sensitively done, obviously, and it's a religious building, so, I'm sure you'd do something tasteful, but probably need to see it in order to understand it more, so, thanks.
Yeah, so the SPAC transportation report recommended additional bicycle parking stalls, is that going to be implemented?
Yeah, so we do have some bicycle parking stalls out in the front yard in front of the preschool, we are also considering the courtyard on the backside along the south to be an opportunity for some additional bike parking that can flex up and down depending on the demand of the students.
Thank you.
All right, you can now sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing, and we'll open it up for anyone who'd like to speak. Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, so bringing it back to, bye. The Planning Commission, are there any other comments?
First of all, that, that, I have a question for Carrie, but I want to hear comments, so, that, it's about the Rotary Roundabout, so I think the idea of fixing that four-way is very good, and I am very interested in that, you know, it's like if you remember Louis Anderson, he used to say he was, he'd be, was late for a meeting because he got stuck at a four-way stop sign in Minnesota, "You go," no, no, you go, that's, and that is the intersection where that happened, because that's, so that, that's great to hear the plans to fix it. Carrie, the question I have is the process for that, the applicant suggested something different tonight, how, how and when would that happen? I mean, I, I trust the city to negotiate the right deal, I guess my first, I have two questions, first one is, how and when would that discussion happen? And my second question is, assuming that we don't make a condition, the $40,000 commitment, we make a commitment that the city and the applicant will negotiate something at the time of the expansion of the school, how does that get documented in our motion? Or how would that get documented?
So, we've had the discussion, engineering staff makes the recommendation in terms of when those improvements be made. We, we've, we've done this in the past, I think of the Aurora on France, when that was developed, they contributed, and I believe the amount was a little less than 40,000, but they contributed a certain amount to intersection improvements, or agreed to pay that assessment for their share of when the intersection of France and 67th, I guess it is, when those intersection improvements take place, 65th, you're right, yes, thank you. So, this would be a similar situation. In terms of negotiating something different, I guess we, we would need the city engineer to provide comment on that, because I know that he had initially looked at the potential of taking additional right-of-way at this point, and I can't recall the specific reasoning that he thought it wouldn't fit on that property, or I can't remember the exact reason for the, the cash amount, but if they're suggesting something different, they could make that proposal to the city council, and the city engineer would be able to, to comment on that.
Because, because I think you're touching on my concern, it seems like, the way I understood it, it's almost like an agreement to negotiate in the future, but your answer sounds like the suggestion is, we're going to get this negotiated by the time, there's something definitive will get put in the city council decision?
Yes, we would want it definitive by the time of final action.
Which is a couple weeks from now, if this, okay, thanks, thanks Carrie, thank you.
Ian, if you look at the second page on the updated engineer's memo on the DIES, there's a paragraph that kind of goes through and explains what the update was, that the traffic study contemplates impacts to Eden Avenue and Normandale, is where it starts, and that portion is new.
Okay, so, so at the, at the, you know, and the first page talks about the 40,000, and that, that italicize on the second page, towards the bottom, it says, "Participation in costs may be by cash payment or land easement slash contribution, as mutually determined by the city and applicant." And I guess if that's satisfactory for the Planning Commission, if that's what we're supposed to, if that's what we're supposed to say, I guess I was wondering, how will that mutually determine, how and when will that mutually determined by city and applicant occur? And I guess the answer from Carrie is, is the city council will figure that out. Is that? And I, I guess I'm okay with that, if that's what the Planning Commission's going to do, now we're just going to say, we're just going to make a motion where it's some contribution to be determined by the city and the applicant, instead of, that, that's kind of what our motion's going to be, I'm okay with that.
Jimmy, did you have something?
Just comments, so, maybe unlike our, you know, our last agenda item, this, this one seems a little more straightforward and palatable, although there's a lot of big requests to accommodate, I mean, this, you know, OLG has been a staple for what, 75 years now, so, I think, when you look at that property, everyone's familiar with it, you know, there's a lot of expansive spaces, so I think we've all, probably all residents around there alike, are just wondering what's going to eventually happen, and it's nice to see that it's in favor of them doing well and expanding into the community, and it couldn't be any more fitting to the community when they're just trying to match exactly what they're doing, and it all looks very well thought out, and all these requests seem very reasonable, so, I mean, I fully support the approval of this conditional use permit, based off all, all this work done, but, great presentation too.
I'm curious whether we might want to pull that signage variance out for a later date, we've received sign variance requests for other projects as individual, I guess I would like to see it, and Commissioner Nemirov brought up a good point, what is 100 square feet? It's kind of, it seems like a placeholder right now, but if, I'm not against building signage, but I think before we throw that in there, I think we can always leave the door open, that it can come at a later time and bring the sign variance by then, and grant it then, I'll just put that out there.
So you're asking to postpone it so you could see more information on it?
Yeah, we'll just take that one off, so we're approving a list of things on under number three, let me see, whatever, all the bullet points, so, to remove the sign variance approval request, to allow us 100 square foot building sign, pending a future submission.
Is that the way you would do, Carrie, or would you just say we deny that variance?
Yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, so they've applied for that variance, so you would want to recommend denial, and it could be based on insufficient. Detail.
Okay. Cool, so if anyone makes a motion, and they want that, okay.
Question, I guess for Carrie maybe, is, do we have any regulations around like a lighted sign, or, I mean, like a LED sign, or, you know, a video sign?
Oh, yeah, I might ask Emily too.
They can't change more than once an hour, so they're kind of stagnant for a period of time, and then they have the same lighting regulations as far as the timing, they have to be turned down, if they're adjacent to a residential district, they have to be turned down between the hours of 10 and 7, and then, there's a clause in the zone, or the sign ordinance that allows for additional restrictions, if the planner sees fit. So that's kind of...
If the planner sees fit, what does that mean? When it's approved, or?
Yep, when it, if it would come through with a sign permit, could add additional restrictions.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
Emily, just real quickly, so the conditions for approval, do they reflect this updated engineering memo?
The conditions are of approval here. It would be, compliance with the conditions and comments listed in the engineer's memo revised August 13th, 2019.
Okay. So we have to...
It's still dated August 2nd, but there's a revised date on that updated memo.
Okay.
Another comment. I could be persuaded either way with what Commissioner Lee said about the signage, I mean, I do recall, we've probably had, since I've been here, like six or seven straight-up sign, you know, approvals, so, you know, it's not out of the ordinary to see that later.
Yeah. Okay.
Just make sure the man next to it is not seven feet tall.
I'd like to move approval of the, subject to the conditions and findings in the staff report, with the exception of the denial of the variance for the signage request.
So, second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other comments? Emily and Carrie, did we do that correctly, is that the correct way to say, okay, good. Any comments, no?
I just want to say that it's an awesome project, I don't know, and I, I know how things work in the religious realm, so, good luck on that capital campaign, because it probably will take a while, but, go for it.
All right, great. So there's a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you, all, thank you. So now we've got our 2020 Planning Commission work plan. Do you, are you going to present that, Carrie, or?
I, I can. So, attached or included in your packet is a continuing draft of next year's work plan, I have tried to make all the, all the additions and recommendations that were made at our last Planning Commission meeting, so if the Planning Commission is comfortable with the work plan, you could approve it tonight, we're not in any, any hurry, so you don't have to, if there's some issues, if you want to still think about it longer, you can, but I'll just quickly go through them. So the first one is our yearly, we're responding to land use applications, which keeps us pretty busy every two weeks, or at least twice a month. And the second one is a, the follow-up to all of the inconsistencies with zoning in the comprehensive plan with the new, new comprehensive plan. The third is the planning study of the Edina and Business Park, so that's the expansion of, well, it's a study of the entire Business Park from 70th down to the south border, from Highway 100 over to Cahill. So we've made some changes to the language there, and then the next item is a list of zoning ordinance amendments that we would consider making changes to, or at least study. Those include the drive-through ordinance, our basement requirements, the one-foot rule, should we continue to require a two-car garage, allowing single-family homes in the R2 District, secondary dwelling units, restaurant orders, tree ordinance, upgrade of building materials, and building height requirements. So that's that list, and then the last item was, and this was again recommended at our last meeting, the Greater Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, and considering doing some codifications around that. So it's a pretty busy, busy year, if we were able to check all these off, we'd really be doing well.
So, obviously I missed the discussions, there was one thing out of all those that maybe you guys discussed, but I don't see it on here, and we talked about the, the non-permeable surfaces with residential development, just of increasing that, and should we have some sort of ordinance for it?
Yes, that's intentional, I didn't put it on here because we're going to do that this year.
Oh, okay, cool, all right, thanks.
Nice.
As part of the update for the comprehensive plan, one of the things that, one of the tools that cities are now looking to, to use a lot is form-based code, and a lot of our, when you think about it, our Greater Southdale is already set up as a form-based code, it basically says, here's the kind of proportions we want, here's the type of materials we want, it defines the public realm, it basically puts it in the code so that, in some ways, cities are taken out of the realm of having to negotiate each individual project, once it becomes part of the zoning code. So, that is not to say that we'll, we would have to use it, but I'm just asking the question if, maybe this is the time for our, our group to, or the city to start investigating that as a pot, potential tool for implementing some of the new, newer developments, standards that we'd like to have for this city, and actually get it codified. So, it would be, one, one step would be to add to our work plan that we look into forming a group to study that, or be provided a way to study that, of get some ideas, or, or see how other cities have used it in the past, whether or not that is something that might be applicable for us to be able to tap into, to use in the future.
I have a question. When you're discussing that, are you thinking citywide, or just in some of these small areas, more where the public realm is under control, and more affected, you know, but, okay?
Actually, cities have done it both ways, so they'll name a district, like we have Greater Southdale District, and they'll have zoning ordinances, form-based zoning ordinances for the Greater Southdale District, or they do it citywide. Some, some cities are smaller, and they're just starting to undergo a lot of rebuilding, so they've, they've, they've adopted form-based code for the entire city. Of course, it never happens on the scale that we're experiencing, because these are just kind of little projects that come up as they do.
Go ahead.
I had a quick question, would one of the deliverables, or outputs, or actions of the work, potential work group be to weigh the positives and negatives of form-based codes as well?
Absolutely, and I would hope that whatever this group is would involve some element of professionals, or possibly a consultant, or someone who, who was familiar with it, to actually give us some recommendations on whether they see that working, and what that might look like. Yeah, it wouldn't be anything to say that we'd have to adopt it, but it's really more of an educational tool for us as a planning, as a planning body, to understand what it is, and whether it could actually help us in, in some of this updating. The thing that's going to be a little tricky is the timing of it, obviously, because we have to get the zoning code updated, so I'm not making any promises that that would, we'd re, you know, arrive at any conclusion by then, to know whether or not to use it, but all I'm saying is that, to get going in the direction of actually learning about it would probably be a good idea.
So, how does this relate to the, because we have the Southdale District design guidelines, and do we, are we having an implementation phase for that, or, because I know we got to the design phase, is that happening, this year, next year?
So, yes, so, that is the, that is that, the last initiative, we never really talked about form-based codes, that's becoming really prescript, prescriptive, where there's more flexibility with the way the design guidelines are written, so, I think the form-based code would be a whole separate, separate topic. So I think the form-based code would be a whole separate, separate topic.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I was going to say, too. I would not, um, support it if it's going to be focused on the smaller plans that we just reviewed, because that was not ever brought up, or, you know, that was not determined, like for the Greater Southdale, that we want to do form-based code. I could maybe support, again, just a small effort, just to be able to educate maybe what it is, because I think everyone's always kind of like, what is it? But whether, you know, I don't know that I want to support investing. I think it could be very costly to-
And very time-consuming.
And very time-consuming to go in that, because I know that there's definitely, I mean, there's multitude of articles, and we can just send those. I, I was just reading one the other day about how that could apply to affordable housing, and it's, it just makes your eyes start to cry, you know, after a while. It's just, so. I, I, I don't know. I do not want to, um, again, support that it would be in the context of kind of going deeper into the smaller area plans, you know, specifically Greater Southdale. Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I definitely would not do form-based code for Greater Southdale. We already got Design Experience Guidelines. I wouldn't want to redo it under, I mean, I kind of, we have something that's really good. I would just use that and go forward with that. I would support, I, I think the 70th and Cahill smaller area plan defines, uh, some form-based code implementations. I, I think we probably would need to review that at some point, is how those recommendations regarding form-based code. There's some very explicit recommendations in the, um, building design section. Guessing, I think it's page 41 or page 42, but don't get on me for being too picky on page, but I think that, I think there's a table that defines how form-based code should be implied, applied there. I think that'd be a good start. I would not support hiring a consultant to advise us on form-based code. I don't think we have, I think we have a big schedule here. And I also, if I was going to start spending city money, there's a lot of other things that I would like to see the city spend on besides a, a form-based code consultant at this, at this time, and I can give you my list offline if you like. So that's kind of my thoughts about form-based code. I, I, it's an interesting idea, but I, I, I think, I think time-wise, we're, we're booked, and expense-wise, it wouldn't be something that I would put money into at this point.
So Sue, would you be agreeable to having it on there, just maybe if you want to? I don't know, or Carrie, help me with how we would do that, if it would just be kind of a, if some people, some commissioners wanted to take some time to put some thoughts together? Or do we even want to do that?
Yeah, you, you could recommend putting together some kind of a working group to, of the commission, to study the issue? Make a presentation to the commission, something to that effect? Keeping in mind it would, you know, that, again, you've got a, a healthy list here, so it's, do you, does the commission want to take that on?
Yeah, if I were, if I were going to recommend working groups, I would have them go on the current initiatives, including the zoning ordinance initiatives. That would be my first choice for a working group.
Carrie, does a working group need to be only chosen from the Planning Commission? Or could they be members of the community?
You could recommend that as well?
Volunteers.
Yeah, that's, sounds like a little bigger, bigger task, but.
Well, it could be, oh, it's how it's defined. We could also keep it very small.
Could be, again, up to the commission.
Yeah, I would be okay with that. I mean, it's really just to get started and get, gather some information. I would like it to be somewhat non-biased, though, and, uh, I mean, I don't think that we have to pay for a, a planning commissioner, but I want it to be something that all of us find useful. I, I get the sense sometimes that, that people feel that it's a personal push of, of certain people on, on the planning commission. That's not the case. I think as, as commissioners, we need to be educated, and it's just a way of getting information. So I, I think a small work group, potentially of some volunteers at the community, could be helpful. They may be experts in their own right. We have a lot of planners in the community. We have people who are knowledgeable in other communities. We might link up, could be able to link up with one of them to supply some information.
My concern is that I think the people who would volunteer for that work group would be pro. I mean, I think it might be biased. I don't know, you know? So I'm, you know, not that I want to say no to this idea, but I'm just kind of thinking, we are a little max. I mean, what if you just, you know, if there's some articles that you've read, maybe just send them out to us and maybe start that way, kind of real, real basic, to, to, you know, kind of real one-on-one, what is it? You know, and, and versus maybe us taking on, because then even if there's a group or a group that you, or gets created, you know, then we still have to listen to it and debate that, and I don't know. Go ahead, Jimmy.
So, just looking at the stuff on our plate, you know, the zoning ordinance things are very specific and tangible and digestible, and the form-based code thing is a lot bigger. And it just got me thinking, because you were talking about education, and maybe it came up when we were talking, but I know the last couple of years, we've talked about trying to do a more, you know, deliberate planning commission-focused, learning activity, whatever that is. So maybe some of it starts specific, you know, to like what we do, why, but then it does explore some of the bigger things, just of where is the future going with some of this stuff? And maybe that's a component to it, at least from an educational standpoint. Because I also agree, like, these are very tangible action items that, like, we know that we can handle them. I wouldn't want to, like, divert attention to something huge that could suck all the, you know, you know, we know that we want to handle these, and, and it seems like it starts better from like an educational perspective first to kind of remove any bias that we all have. So I don't know if that would be a good venue for it, and I don't know if you guys talked about that. I know it's not on this work plan, but is that something that we should put on there? More than just a work session, more than just like an hour, you know? We talked about doing a half-day of something, or maybe a full day of something.
Of a detailed, I guess, yeah.
Mostly for, you know, new commissioners, you know, at least. You start green, you kind of know stuff, but then that gets everyone kind of on the same page, and I know we've struggled at times with that.
So are you suggesting, Jimmy, that as part of an educational afternoon or something, piece of that could be the form-based code?
Yeah.
Pros and cons, what it is?
Yeah.
From an objective, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, and then maybe, you know, maybe from that point, then we might-
And if there was appetite to do something at that point, then we could decide, there's a work group, or it's on the 2020 loan plan, or-
It's just a big thing. It's, it's huge.
But we have it, we have it in front of us, so it doesn't kind of get dropped. It doesn't go to the top of the queue, or the middle even, but it's, it's there, and we, we go to it when we, companies come up. Especially like a seminar or something like that may present itself, speakers.
Yeah, we can keep our eyes open for some of those seminars as they pop up, look for that topic. It would be good if there was a pro-con, you know, so you could hear both sides.
That's, that's, that's what I'll be looking for first here. That would be a-
So I, I'm with Joanne in that, at this point, I'd just recommend if someone sees a good article, send it out. I think that's the extent. Sue has looked into form-based code. Joanne and I have looked into it. I'm speaking for you a little bit here, but from my perspective, what I've looked into, I don't see the benefit to Edina. It's just another way of doing things, so, um, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if you've, you know-
It confuses me.
Huh?
I still need to be educated.
Yeah, and so I, I think those are, um, I, I think just, I, I think it's at the level of informal education at this point. I'm with Joanne on that. I don't think it's, I pers, I, I, to be very frank, I don't think it's worth our time or money to spend a lot on this.
That's fine. If there is no support from the Planning Commission, we don't need to do it. It was just a suggestion. I wasn't sure if it even came up as part of, you know, if it is related to work planning. It was more in terms of, we had discussed, how do you get the comp plan into the zoning? And form-based code came up then. So I didn't mean to say that we have to do something, so if there's no support, then there's no support.
No, that's not what we were saying. No, that's cool.
I will say at least, you know, just from the educational perspective, I think we're coming off the heels of the comp plan, where we are thinking big picture, and, you know, maybe that happens every 10 years, but can we, as a commission, do better just for ourselves? And I know we talked about a more formal, informal, educational thing, instead of just packing everything into these work sessions. So I, I would be, I would be totally behind if someone helped coordinate something, and we could get something on our schedules, whenever that is, but something more substantial than a work session. So I, I don't know-
Totally agree.
If you guys talked about that, or if that'd be some staff could help tee up.
And we haven't, and I've talked about this in the past, and haven't got it going again, but you remember we used to meet with Bloomington and Richfield, and we would do some development, educational opportunities around that. That might be something, you know, we look for some pro-con consultant where we can pool our resources and, and have one of those work sessions as a joint meeting with some of our surrounding communities. I could look into something like that.
Yeah, hear what they're, if they've been considering, or if there are others. There's, might be other.
Or if you hear from the other, um, heads of the planning departments of other municipalities, I mean, there, there could be just like something on the web that we can watch some webinar for 20 minutes, and it doesn't cost us anything. We do it on our own. Because, because what I'm hearing is, there is something of a desire to get more education. It doesn't sound like anybody has capacity this year, based on this work plan, or 2020, to really do much. But, um, maybe it's worth getting educated, and if we can do it without spending a lot of money and time, why wouldn't we do that? If you can find a good resource.
If I could say just one thing, if people are interested, one, one city that's really done, gone deeply into form-based code is Miami. So if you want to go out and look for, there's a lot of articles about how Miami did it. And Sue, I think that all, or portions of Detroit have some form-based code now.
Those aren't two cities that are big sellers for, in my mind. I don't think we're going to emulate either of those cities for architecture or design.
That's, I'm just telling you, that's where-
In that case, forget it. We don't want to do that.
If you want to look it up, those are some of the more notable implementations, recent implementations, and there's a lot of. In Miami in particular, I've seen a lot of information, a lot of study and commentary.
With that discussion, were you, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add selfishly, I really like the idea of an educational afternoon or something, and if this is included as a small topic, among other things, I would welcome the chance to be better educated-
Yeah.
And maybe level-set with the rest of the commission.
Yeah. No, I think that's a, it's a good reminder. I know we did speak about having that kind of half-day, more intense, and I think we should follow through.
I would be happy if we go forward with that to volunteer to help coordinate or do planning.
Okay.
Not presenting.
Yeah. All right. Yeah.
That's a long list.
Great. Well, so are we to a point, though, where we could just recommend approval of this then as it is, as, okay, just so we can move on? Let's do that. So you, do you need a formal recommendation? Okay, does anyone want to make a recommendation?
Sure, sure. Carrie, did, when you read that list, did it have a few additional things on there, of what we were looking at? You said first, or, right?
You know, we discussed it at our last Planning Commission meeting, so there were some things that were added two weeks ago from the original version, yes.
Oh, so it wasn't on this version, then, that was in our-
It is.
It is on there. Oh, okay, all right.
Like, like drive-throughs, to review that.
Yeah, I didn't see that on this, was I?
It is, yeah.
Okay, all right. As long as it's in that copy, that's fine.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the format for this document, the more you fill in, the smaller the text gets, so it, it's really, apologize for that. We'll work on that for next year.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so that, that was, that, yeah, has been updated. Okay, so do you even want to make a motion to approve the work plan?
I moved to approve the work plan per the, I guess, is it the staff memo, or what, what is it?
Just as drafted.
As drafted.
So a second, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
All righty.
All right, moving on. Um, correspondence and petitions, yes or none? One of these, I will drop dead when there is one. Have we ever had one?
A petition, I can't think of any time we've had a petition, though.
Okay. Chair and member comments. I don't. I know there's been another global. What? I'm looking at you for, uh, member comments, because there was another.
Oh, IPCC report? Yeah.
Well, I wasn't going to talk about that. No, actually, I'm going to talk mostly about National Night Out and Night to Unite, because we had a very well-organized one in our neighborhood, and, you know, it was very popular throughout the city. I'd like to congratulate our local Morningside Neighborhood Association, which did a fantastic job. It was well-organized, well-run, well-advertized, and well-attended. It was really spectacular. It even had a bike parade, resurrecting a tradition from 50-plus years ago, so. Two, I want to point out that Edina, you know, it's often mentioned that Edina is demographically the oldest city in the, in the metro. I don't know if the state, but, um, you know, we have the largest number of, of the oldest residents. And that's become a big issue with housing, and people wanting to downsize and needing more housing for, you know, condos and apartments for that. But one thing that was really interesting about our, our local Night to Unite was that the huge number of young families that are now in our neighborhood. When I moved in 10, a little over 10 years ago, it was a very quiet neighborhood. There were a lot of, of people my age or older, and, um, it has really, really changed in the past 10 years. And this, well, it was so well-attended, that helped too, but, um, it was just amazing how, how many really young children, young families there were there. And so I think it's important for us to, as a commission, to think about, you know, we're often thinking about our older residents and what they need, which is, of course, important, but, you know, as suburbs develop, they start from the nearest part of, of the big city, which would be Minneapolis, and they kind of work their way out. So our neighborhood was built in the 20s. Far southwest Edina was built in the 70s, right? So the population ages as you move out from the city. So we're kind of developing into a city that's having multiple, multiple personalities, you might say. And so we might be thinking about how some of the things we do and propose might be different for different parts of the city, and they might move along in time as the city changes over the years. So I, I think it's something really interesting to think about, that, you know, we've got the sort of this gradient of age within the city. And then, of course, third, I'd like to mention transportation. It was gratifying to see how many neighbors walked in bike to Weber Park instead of driving. The bike parade probably helped with that. But also the residents and council members who worked to get 42nd Street with a sidewalk on it, because, you know, virtually everybody used that. And then we learned something interesting about one of our neighbors right down the block, which is a two-parent family with, with a, I believe, one child. And, oh, that's right, yeah, she was on her scooter. And one of those parents doesn't drive, doesn't even have a license. And so this person needs to get around. Now, hopefully, we're, the, the E-line bus will come along to 44th and go along France, and that'll help. And we have Southwest Light Rail, which for our neighborhood is only about a mile and a half away. But again, you know, in terms of diversity of kinds of people that we have in the city, different people have different needs, and, again, our neighborhood, which is older, it has sidewalks, it was built as kind of a streetcar suburb, is very different from southwest Edina, where you've got large lots and, you know, it's car-focused and stuff. southwest edina, where you've got large lots and, you know, it's car-focused and stuff. So again, the kinds of things that we need in the city are going to vary depending on where you are in the city. So the closer you are to Minneapolis, the closer you are to the north and the east, the more likely you are going to have people who are depending on transit, people who are depending on bicycle and pedestrian network, so. I just thought it was really interesting that, I found one, who lives, you know, across the street and down the block. Anyway, and then another anecdotal thing is that one of the couples on our block is, they're downsizing, they're, you know, tighter of their house, and they're moving to a, to a condo, but because of the lack of housing in edina, they're moving to St. Louis Park, because there's just not enough housing in the city for that. So, and again, you know, they're older, not real old, but, you know, they're older and downsizing, and so, you know, it's this tough balance that we have, you know, every time we show up here, dealing with people, older people, younger people, you know, different people have different needs, so we have a lot to consider, so. Anyway, thank you.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
One thing they had to lose, they said more people are dependent on things, and I'd also say there's just more people seeking those things, too. So the people moving in, not necessarily depending on them, but they are seeking those, and I think it's the same type of gradient you're talking about, but we've certainly seen it in our neighborhood, too, being close to this whole area, people move in seeking that stuff, so we'd like to see, you know, infrastructure changes and transit changes that support it, so. It doesn't, you don't need to just find the one person that actually needs it, like, there's a lot of people that want it.
Anybody else with any comments? Okay. Took my glasses off too soon. Staff, anything happening?
Just a reminder, we were going to have the work session with Roger in, at our next meeting, two weeks. So we've asked him, you know, how he comes in and does our, kind of the planning 101. We've asked him to step that up, and so it's kind of brief overview of planning 101, but then take it up to the next level, like a 301 course level. If there's any other topic that you want me to have him bring for us?
What do you mean by 301 level?
Well, just, just some more advanced, beyond just the basics of conditional use permit variances. I think we talked about ex parte communications, you know, get more into the rezoning, conditional use permit, those kind of things? But if there's some other topic that you think of?
Does he, does he know anything about form-based code?
Yeah. He does have opinions on that, yes. And I'm sure he would share them with you, because he, he has had some, some experience with some of his client cities.
What about getting someone from the outside, like John Shardlaw, to do a training for us? Could we, could we get that?
If there's a, is there a topic that you're-
Planning Commissioning 101. Yeah, definitely.
Oh, yeah, he, he's given some of those.
Yeah.
Didn't we, was that the one we saw at the Lega Minnesota Cities?
Yeah, or even, yeah, where we were at WSB, that was excellent, where we actually went through cases.
Yeah, that was a very good one.
Yeah, he's, he's very good at that.
I mean, it was a real kind of-
We can look for those kind of things, sure.
Yeah. It was just, it was a little more intensive, and then we also, at the end, discussed it in our groups, and then found out how it actually did play out. These were actual cases, so it was very helpful.
Couldn't that be part of that half-day thing we've been talking about, right? That's, I guess I was kind of picturing that's what we were going to do, bring in somebody.
Shouldn't, yeah, so do we, do we want to do the Roger thing, or should we just focus on the-
Is he watching this? No. I don't know, you know, I mean, it's-
I don't think he would be offended.
No, he wouldn't be offended, but, um-
It's certainly be helpful for-
Yeah, no, I was, I was joking when I said it was watching. I mean, I know that we always-
Watching.
Watching, but it is useful, but I think it would probably be good to maybe be able to go a little bit deeper, because it is kind of, you know, basic. I think you probably already have the concepts down to, you know, even without that, but. So it's just, are we doing an hour? So is like at 6 o'clock, or is it 5:30?
5:30.
Okay.
And I can ask him, you know, his office is pretty good size, maybe they've got some form-based codes or something that he could share with us? All right, we will plan on that.
One other thing I saw come in through the, the website or whatever, was like an affordability discussion, I think with the chair of the Minneapolis Planning Commission. His name's Sam Rockwell, I mean, got to be a great, great actor.
Who is the mayor of Flintstones?
Yeah. So, I mean, if anyone's interested in that, just, if, if you didn't see that, no, just check your email, and it has the details.
That's actually tomorrow night.
Yes, tomorrow night.
Is it tomorrow night?
It's at 6:30, and it's at the church on 56th?
54th.
54th.
Right by the creek.
Yep, right by the creek. Where I think Mike, yeah.
We gave them an addition, didn't we?
Right.
And then did anyone see, maybe this came out, did anyone see the sturgeon that was pulled out of?
I saw the sturgeon.
Did you see the YouTube?
I went down and saw the fish.
Did you see it? You were there?
Yeah, I saw the fish, yeah.
So it's on YouTube, check out Minnehaha Sturgeon.
I think, is there a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, or meeting adjourned, thank you.